Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining the Wisconsin Institute for Law and Liberty webinar on our Restoring American Education Project on Model School Board Policies. Before we get started, we're going to give a few minutes for people to get logged in here. While we're waiting, I want to just put up a reminder for those of you who are participating, particularly those of you who are school board members. This is a reminder about your legal duties and how we're asking people to participate today. Okay, well, I'm going to get started. Thank you again for your time today. Happy Monday. I am Libby Sobek. I'm the Director of Education Policy at the Wisconsin Institute for Law and Liberty. Today, we'll be speaking about our new project and some of the model school board policies that we've released. You would have received a notification when we started, but we are recording this session today just as a resource for others who weren't able to participate live. I want to take a minute and note something unique for any school board members participating on today's call. Wisconsin's open meetings laws prohibit school board members from discussing policy or school board members' business, excuse me, outside of a properly posted open meetings notice. Given that school board sizes fluctuate around the state, school board members could be in violation of this requirement even having a discussion with one or two other members. To ensure that today is a helpful resource for all and that we don't cross any lines of impropriety, we ask that you do not use the Zoom chat function during today's presentation. Instead, please submit questions directly to me via the Q and A function, which can be found at the bottom of your screen. That will ensure that questions are coming directly to me and then we aren't creating any sort of problems with people or school board members talking directly to each other. The Wisconsin Institute for Law and Liberty is a nonprofit law and policy center here in Milwaukee. We do a variety of work, both litigation and policy work. We also have begun doing more crafting of model legislation and advocating for bills in the state capitol. Our hope is to advance the principles of limited government, free speech, transparency, and education reform. So what is the Restoring American Education Project and why did we start? What we saw was a rift that occurred with the pandemic between our public school establishment and our parents and their students. We saw parents get a peek into these classrooms, raising significant concerns about the content that was being used in the classroom as well as the inability for parents to engage in meaningful conversation with school administration and oftentimes their school boards. Since the pandemic, we've seen a wave of parental engagement and activism to holding school boards accountable. But when we see these individuals get elected, many of you on this call, I've had this conversation. You get to this newly elected office and there aren't a lot of resources and how you can promote pro-parent and pro-transparency efforts. In fact, I'd argue that the majority of the resources for school board members across the country are focused on protecting the establishment and not focused on creating pro-parent and pro-transparency efforts. Thus, the Restoring American Education Project was born. What we know is in here in Wisconsin, one out of every five students attends an educational option that isn't their assigned traditional public school. But what that means for this project is that there are four out of five students who are using their traditional public schools and we need to be focused on helping and ensuring those students and their families are supported and provided with as much flexibility and support as possible. So how do we do this at the district level? One, we really want to make sure that school board members know what types of policies are considered pro-parent and pro-transparency. It's really important to remember that a public school district and their school board are running a mini government. They have a lot of mandates from both the state and federal level and navigating those challenges can feel incredibly overwhelming, not to mention trying to change administration and policy about how they engage with parents. Our hope is that our model policies that we're going to be discussing today will serve as a resource for all of you to take to your school boards, to take to your community and have a discussion about whether these topics are already addressed and if they're not addressed, how they can be reflective of your community's values. So the way I'm going to talk about our policies today is kind of in categories. We're going to start with the good governance category. And what we mean by good governance is really focused on two things. One, we believe that school districts need to shift their perspective. Instead of treating parents as the enemy or as the problem, they should be treating parents as equal partners in their child's education. This requires good engagement expectations on behalf of both the parents and the school board, but it also requires that the school board itself has good governance by the district and the administration. If we don't have good policies in place to ensure that there's an expectation on behalf of the administration, no matter how much a parent's engaged, they're going to run into obstacles. So we focus on a couple of different categories in the good governance topic. First, we really wanted to talk about parent and family and community engagement. We think we need to set the expectation that parents and families and community are expected to be involved in the local public school district and that the public school district should create as many opportunities as possible to have that sort of engagement. The second thing we need to ensure is that employees have clear expectations about their rights to speak within a school district, where within a school setting, excuse me, when they actually are speaking on behalf of the government and when they are speaking outside of non-school settings. Having clear expectations about how the First Amendment works and how teachers and administrators can be expected to communicate with students and the community is really important. The third part of the good governance policy include really kind of obvious ideas that school boards should be reviewing and updating their policies at least annually. That there should be an expectation for board and superintendent communications in a way that if someone's emailing the superintendent with a bunch of questions and not the board or vice versa, there's an expectation of transparency about those issues. How is the school board going to engage with the administration? It's really important to remember that the school board sets policies, but the administration is the one who implements it. Without good communications between the school board and the administration via the superintendent, we can't expect things to work out the way we would hope. Lastly, we really think it's important to have expectations for our school boards to have the administration train and evaluate their personnel. I can't tell you the amount of times that we have informed a school district or a school administrator about a mandate that exists at the state or federal level and nobody's even aware of it. That needs to start with the school board and its policies about expectations for its employees. We should be ensuring that every teacher, every staff member knows what rights and mandates are in place at the state and federal level. So when parents are trying to utilize those mechanisms, there is less ability for people to claim that they don't exist. The next category that I want to talk about is parent rights. This is the idea that parents have a constitutional right to direct the upbringing and education of their children. This is based off of Supreme Court, United States Supreme Court case law as well as Wisconsin case law, for those of you from Wisconsin. We should be ensuring that school district policies reflect this fundamental constitutional right on behalf of parents so that they are given every opportunity to direct their child's education. What do we mean by direct their child's education? We created three categories that we thought were really important. The first is the idea of controversial issues in the classroom. This policy is focused on how do we navigate one of the most divisive topics of today of what's an appropriate or inappropriate material and how can parents have a say over whether their kids should access them? We think the first step is to have a policy in place that talks about what it means to be controversial and how to engage parents with the opportunity to exempt or remove their child from those conversations. Parents are the first line of defense for their children. We should be engaging them at every opportunity and talking about ways to ensure that they are able to create an environment at the public school that is right for their child. The second topic we talked about in parental rights is survey, notice, and opt-out. This is actually based in federal law called the PPR, the Pupil Protection Rights Act. And it's a part of an idea that if students are being surveyed via the school district, that parents should be notified ahead of time and should be given the opportunity to opt-out. This again is similar to the good governance ideas of this right already exists in federal law, but school districts don't seem to have a good handle on what this means. And so our model policy is focused on explaining what the federal law means and how to create a good administrative policy around it. Last but not least is the idea of student gender identity. For those of you who are familiar with Will's lawsuits, we have seen in Wisconsin and around the country a push to have policies at the district level that one, allow students to determine their own gender identity and two, do so without any parental engagement or involvement. The most extreme example we have in Wisconsin is the Madison School District, which has a policy that actively prohibited teachers from notifying or speaking with parents about their child's decision. We think policies like that are incredibly harmful, not only to a child who is going through a difficult time, but to the idea and access to healthcare via that child's parental parents and guardians. We need to change the way we look at this issue. This model policy is step one. It basically explains how students can navigate the question of gender identity, how districts should engage parents, and what this really means. We're not talking about whether someone should be called Elizabeth or Libby. We're talking about a student who is looking to transition to a different gender, who may be experiencing gender dysphoria. And we really think that having policies that engage parents is in the best interest of students and their health and access to healthcare while they're going through a difficult time. This policy is an attempt to really create that foundation. The next category is model policies on transparency. This has been an incredibly hot topic over the last year and we wanted to sort of look at this through another lens. Of course, we're supportive of states like Wisconsin passing curriculum transparency legislation. But what if we don't have a governor that's going to sign that legislation? Thankfully, we have school boards who have the power to do this in their own communities. So these policies are really focused on just that. How can school boards implement policies that are good, transparent policies to help parents access materials and create a conversation at the community level? This does not need to be parents versus teachers. This can be done in a way that opens the door to having really important and critical conversations around curriculum, around access to educational materials. We think that starts with the idea that parents should always have the right to review instructional and related documents. But in addition to addressing the materials that are being used in the child's classroom given to students, we also know that there has been a major push for teachers to have professional development and having materials that are pushing them to one ideology. We should have policies in place to give parents the right to review these materials. Now, those of you on the call may be thinking, yes, Libby, but what about copyright? What about all these other issues? These policies address that and say, listen, if there's a copyright issue, then you have to make it available in a different way. You have to allow a parent to come and look at it. You have to create other transparency efforts to ensure that the school district is making it as easy as possible for parents and guardians to engage in the idea of transparency. Once we take away the fight over whether or not a parent can engage in materials, I really think a community will self-regulate in terms of having the expectation of a parent approaching a teacher or a school administrator and a teacher and a school administrator not feeling as if that's an attack, but we have to start with good policies. Last but not least, our model policies that are Wisconsin-specific. Because I am a Wisconsin licensed attorney and we do the most of our work here in Wisconsin, there were a lot of state mandates that we have taken questions on or reviewed and thought needed some additional fresh looks as to good model policies. This section of the presentation is really focused on just that. So what kind of topics does this include? This includes the idea of assessment of educational goals. Here in Wisconsin, we have a requirement that school districts have to allow for, have to allow for an assessment of educational goals every year. In Wisconsin, we allow school districts to decide what curriculum to use. That is not state mandated. While we have state mandates on goals and what requirements like number instructional hours or types of required courses like math and English, districts have to provide, districts have to get to decide what curriculum they want to use. We should have a clear process about how a district is making that decision, who is making that decision, and what it means to have an educational goal. Similarly, we also have a requirement in Wisconsin called human growth and development. This essentially is our sex ed version of curriculum. This is not a required curriculum for the state. The decision to have human growth and development is a decision at the school board and state law has a host of issues of allowing parents to opt-out, creating a parental committee, advisory committee. We wanted to take those state requirements and really put together a policy that would make it really clear what the expectations are. Similarly, we talk about things like access to student records and student discipline. These are Wisconsin-specific questions, but we're really hopeful that these policies can be helpful to particularly Wisconsin school board members who are dealing with these state mandates. I'm going to pause for a second because we got a question. And this is a question about library materials for educational students. It's a really good question and it leads me to sort of where our project is heading. We have heard from many of you that questions on library materials and questions on social-emotional learning curriculum are difficult to navigate from a pro-parent, pro-transparency perspective. So TBD, we are working on a policy that addresses specifically for Wisconsin how libraries and school libraries interact and what rights and abilities a school board would have to limit or address inappropriate materials. We have heard that that's a really concerning issue for parents and we're hoping to create a policy that would be reflective of how best to do that. And so how do you access these policies? If, oops, excuse me, sorry about that. If you go to will-law.org/schoolboards, every single one of these policies is listed on our website in its individual PDF. At the bottom of each individual PDF includes a legal analysis for why we think these are good policies and should provide some resources for a school board member or community member wanting to raise these issues for their community. So our hope is that this model policy can be used not only in Wisconsin but across the country with the exception asterisk of the Wisconsin-specific policies. On our website, will-law.org/schoolboards, we have, we have all of the policies listed and there's categories. So if one says Wisconsin, for those of you who aren't Wisconsin residents, that would be sort of the state-specific policies. But the legal analysis we did and the perspective we took on these model policies is that you should be able to take this and start a conversation with any school district around the country. These are topics that should be universal for communities. Now, I will note, states like Florida with Governor DeSantis's bills that he signed, there might be some sort of specific aspects to a state law that would maybe need to tweak our model policies. But our hope is that these model policies are a starting place for conversations with school board members, with parents, and of course, any local council that would be advising school board members. So I'm just going to keep reading questions. Thank you for all of them. So how do parents get transparency to the human growth and development courses? So in Wisconsin, this is our version of sex ed. It was a state law that you have to make it, the school board has to make the decision. They have to have a parent advisory committee and that you have to be able to opt-out. So if you are having your students attend a school district that has human growth and development questions or, excuse me, courses, you should be able to ask questions about, do we have it? Is there a parent advisory committee? And I'd like to see the materials that are used for that before I make the decision to opt-out. Again, that's a state law requirement for here in Wisconsin. So one, we got another question about our student gender policy and it's a really good one. So the way we wrote the student gender policy was to say, if a student is voluntarily transitioning, meaning a teacher is not talking to them about it, but a student is walking into the classroom wanting to be telling his or her classmates to call them by a different name, to call them by a different pronoun, that we say, our policy says, a school district may notify the parents. The reason why we wrote it that way is twofold. One, we wanted to make these policies as accessible to everyone as possible, meaning that we know school boards are made up of people with a variety of political perspectives. And so we wanted to write something that would be a good place to start. Of course, these model policies are designed for you as a community to make changes, just like you might do from your state's school board associations or companies like Neola. So if you have a board that feels like even in that situation where a child is voluntarily transitioning, you want to mandate your staff to be able to inform parents, that's an absolute possibility to make that tweak. The second reason why we didn't do that tweak is because we really saw these policies as building on one another. If you have true parent, family, community engagement with your school, if there's expectations that parents should have access to curriculum and access to having conversations with their students, teachers, we would expect that those parents would know their child is experiencing gender dysphoria or going through a tough time. And so we think that these policies, while important at the school board level, also really need to encourage that parents are engaged with their, with their children. So we wrote that policy in mind with the thought of if a child again is coming to school and choosing to transition, not being led by their school administrators, then we would expect parents to know that. And so our policy is reflective of that belief. So I'm going to, I think I answered all those questions. I'm going to keep going, but happy to continue to answer questions for people on the policies. This project is not just limited to school board policies. We really believe that public school teachers and administrators are stuck in a system that has created a pipeline of expectation. They are told from day one at their teacher preparation programs that the only way to help kids is to talk about gender identity at kindergarten, to address race right off the bat. And we really think that that's part of the problem, that we've never seen alternative resources. We don't make those really clear. So just today, we released, I don't know why it's not going next, there we go, From the Top Report. This is a report that The Washington Post covered today and it analyzes the classes in the colleges of education across the University of Wisconsin system of required courses. If you want to be a kindergarten teacher in Wisconsin, what classes do you have to take? It was shocking, to say the least. We found that no matter what campus you went to, no matter what path of teaching you wanted to take, you had to take classes on anti-racism, CRT, discretion of microaggressions. For example, we use on the slide as an example of the book Anti-Racist Baby as Required Reading for Students. Listen, we know that UW's have a different version of free speech and ability for professors to have tenured speech. But what we need to have is diverse views on the world. We need to let teachers know that this is not the one and only way to serve our children. And so we are putting together resources, starting with the From the Top Report, that is going to continue to support teachers and administrators who are looking for other options out there for how you can teach these important topics like the history of America or economics, but in a way that's really reflective of their community's values and not this indoctrination that's happening from the top at the teacher preparation programs. The last part of this project, which is coming, is Empowering Parents section. We have so many phenomenal partners across the country. Some of you are on this call today and we want to be able to create a one-stop shop, particularly for our Wisconsin parents, to be able to access the incredible resources that have been put together by our partners around the country. That page is coming soon. The second thing we're working on for parents is creating specific parent handbooks on things like Wisconsin parental rights and how to participate and access educational options like homeschooling in Wisconsin. We really want to create a resource that highlights everyone's work across the country, but also is a resource for our families here in Wisconsin. I'm going to take a break to, so how can we find the From the Top Report? It is located, if you go to will-law.org/restoringed, you're going to see our homepage for this project. You'll see a school board slide, you'll see a teachers and administrative slide and a parent slide. If you click on teachers, that is going to take you from the top report. That report includes the appendix of all of the classes we reviewed. We accessed the coursework for all of these classes. We reviewed their curriculum and required reading. So everything that I'm talking about is really reflective of the research we did. I will certainly put, on the website, we will put a link to the Washington Post story. It just published this morning. So for those of you asking for that link, I will make sure it's up today and available for anybody who's accessing our website again at will-law.org/restoringed. The next question is about our survey and assessments policy. How can we ensure that parents know about the content of individual surveys if districts have a blanket opt-in, opt-out for surveys? It's a great question. So the first we have to focus on is how can we ensure and empower parents to know their rights? Again, we're really seeing this project as a comprehensive review. It can't all just fall on school boards. It has to also, we have to empower parents to be engaged in these questions. So one, it's about educating parents about So one, it's about educating parents about their rights. I think a blanket opt-in, opt-out for districts is a little bit risky because I think it makes it confusing for parents about, one, their rights and two, the content. Federal law says that if you're going to do a survey on controversial issues, you need to give advance notice of that survey to parents about what the questions are and allow them to opt-out. So one way would be to take your opt-in, opt-out standard form and change that to, I want to be notified if this is going to happen. So I have the opportunity to opt-out. That would ensure that parents would have the ability to see what's coming and it would require your administration to really be mindful about these parents' desires and create a system in which they are communicating with parents who are impacted by the survey and who have communicated that they want to be notified right away. That would be one way to tweak a general opt-in, opt-out form. So, how can you get something similar in your state? Well, we're hoping this project is a really good starting place for our friends and allies across the country. I am very open to and happy to talking to people in various states who are looking for model policies that are specific to their state laws. I've been in communication with groups in Florida and Texas about just that. So, if you're interested in a model policy that's something specific about your state, I'm very happy to add our resources to our website. But again, we're really hoping that this is a resource for families, not just in Wisconsin, but around the country because we know there's so much great work happening, but it's happening in pockets. So we're hoping this is the start of a conversation that says, here's a one-stop shop for people who are trying to navigate, whether you're a school board member, a public school teacher or parent. And I apologize if I was unclear. The Washington Post covered this report, the From the Top Report. The story was posted just this morning about our research and why this topic is so important about teachers being put in these education preparation programs that are indoctrinating them to believe you can only teach students in one way. So, I'll pause there. I believe I've answered everybody's question, but I'll pause in case there's other questions. My email is listed on the screen, so very happy to schedule conversations with any of you about specific questions on the policies or how we can support your work in other states. I want to be clear that we want to promote as many resources as possible. So, if you work for an organization that supports any of these groups, please contact me. We'd love to cross-promote your work on our website as well because we really believe in ensuring that we are making the great information that's out there as accessible as possible. And I think, I think I saw one more question. Let me just double check. If I didn't get it to you, I apologize. I really am grateful for all of the questions that came in today. And for those of you who took time over your lunch period to listen to our presentation and learn more about our project, again, information can be found on our website at will-law.org/RestoringEd. And we're going to be recording this session. We're going to be posting it on our YouTube. For those of you who registered, I will do a follow-up email with links to the story as well as to this live session posted on YouTube. And again, thank you so much for all the great work you're doing. We are really looking forward to working with all of you going into this next school year and really hoping that this is a resource that will be available to as many people as possible. Thank you so much.